Welcome to the June 2nd, 2024 regular city council vote is now called to order.
I'm glad we of the United States of America. The Republic extends one nation under God, individual, liberty, and justice.
Roll call. Thank you, Curtis. Here, Gina Reed Hibler. Here, John Breckenridge. John Feiger.
Yes.
Mark Carr.
Yeah.
All right, that takes us to our first public participation. Would you please come? You're welcome to come to the front. Be sure and sign in and you have five minutes.
I'm Shilong. I'm a naturalized American citizen who has lived in the past in Massachusetts and in Florida and California for thirty-one years. Finally, I decided to spend the rest of my life in this wonderful place where the beauty of America, the way our founding fathers intended, has been preserved. But I have a really concern concerning today's agenda with renting the city. Crossroads, for sure. I love that that aspect of this city and we need to promote the city as crossroads where important highways are criss and crossing. But on the other hand, we need to think about unintended consequence of possible rebranding. In Massachusetts, for example, when they opened up Problem Town, which is at the end of Cape Cod. Then people with certain, I mean creative people started building it. In the end, it turned into a refugee city for people with certain sexual orientation. And I've seen the same thing happening in Key West, I mean, the southeast and the Florida, where it turned into pretty much a key creative people who have certain, very creative, but then very different sexual orientation. And as a professor back in San Francisco State, I had to deal with one third of my students being having certain, like a sexual orientation, very hard to deal with as an educator. In the end, I resigned, but at the same time, I saw that beautiful city turning into a refugee city for people with certain sexual orientation. So my, here's my question to everyone, I mean, for this beloved town where I moved only like six months ago. And I, I really enjoy living here and this town is filled with decent, god willing people. There's, there's some, when we make a decision, there's an unintended consequence. So what I'm trying to say is there could be an unintended consequence of attracting a lot of people who have funny ideas about how to turn this city into a rec, another refugee city who would perpetuate their own lifestyle. So that's all I wanted to say. Really, I really want us to be really careful and consider unintended consequences. Are we really ready to see all those strange flags going up and turning into all those streets filled with people? Are we ready to see that? Then go ahead and rebrand it. But that's all. Thank you for kind of allowing me to put in my humble. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to panel two. He is an issue.
Thank you, ma'am.
On to the consent agenda. Is there anybody that would like to take an item off of the consent agenda and put it on its own? For the session? Item A, motion to approve the minutes of the May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five city hall work session. Item B, motion to approve the minutes of the May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five regular session. Item C, motion to approve the annual lifer license renewals for on the Corbals, the Cameron Market, and track card number fifteen. I will entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda. All in favor?
Bye.
All opposed? Pass it. If in favor, zero opposed. That makes to the appointments. So, the appointments on here are for review only. Review has three terms on the front board to terms are expiring. That's really ominous, obviously, because of school concerns. Additionally, have vacancies for the regulations of Jared Hanigan and Josh Smith, and also have a vacancy for Matt Arm. All three of the sitting park board members have submitted applications to be retained on the board. The park board met on May eighth and recommended three appointments for all four individuals. Review have another application for them to review for a day of voting. She didn't come to me with last park board meeting or they do not have a forum, so when I'm not able to make a recommendation. Comment? All right. That moves us on to the city manager's report. However, we have an interim. So we'll talk about that if you want. So that takes us to unfinished business.
Are we gonna vote on our board?
No, it's review only. If there's no record, they will be on the next agenda for.
We'll get a discussion then too.
Yeah. All right, that takes us to our unfinished business, the second and final reading of Bill twenty twenty-five dash nineteen showing. Bill twenty twenty-five dash nineteen, an ordinance approving positions for the establishment of a Cameron Crossing Community Improvement District and directing certain city officials to take certain additional actions consistent therewith. I will entertain a motion to pass Bill twenty twenty-five dash nineteen on a second and final reading by roll call. Discussion. Welcome.
Yes, it is nothing to change in the block. It was in and the petition was not amended in full, but it's in.
Go ahead. All those in favor are passing Bill twenty twenty-five dash nine. All in all, you all call. Gina Reed Hibler. Yes. John Breckenridge. Yes. John Feiger. Yes. Mark Carr. Thank you, Curtis. Yes. That takes us to discussion on the third street dangerous building.
I would be happy to start. Well.
You need to leave?
Yeah. Are we gonna ask her to refuse herself?
I would say that would be wide decision, even if there is no legal conflict in this to avoid, if you're so comfortable with that. But there is a financial interest, but there is a financial interest that could be involved here, but we would also consider that.
And I believe when three and so much that we were talking with, I did get the information, what it was about. Farming.
I know. He's trying to finish up with bean.
My, where should I go? That way, that way, that way. That way it's not lost.
Yeah. That way you're in.
Okay. So, somebody might suggest.
Yeah, it's gonna be hot out there.
We may need to ask her questions that we discussed.
I, I think that in the best process would be that any questions that you might have, you submit to her, have her send them right in. Just, you have any sort of discussion with us or can you do that's a conflict as well?
Yep. But are we going to vote?
No.
Or is that for that? So, nothing, just discussion?
It doesn't mean we can't set it up for next time or.
I know. I just don't like speaking and down the road and done for years and I'm well tired of it.
Well, we've got a process that we've had to go through more.
Yeah, I read, I read it all. I've got copies of everything.
I would note from the council that that process is still not finished. The deadline is just for the property owner to do the demolition prior to the city issuing a notice and receiving a warning in front of the dangerous building commissioner determining whether or not the buildings are truly dangerous and to be rehabilitated or potentially renewed.
But there's one deadline that's already passed, but that's, that can terminate all of this discussion. So on the letter that the city sent her, and I have copies. I've got it back in six months. No, I've got it about. There is a, something like thirty days or something. There were things that had to be done or.
Haven't she gone through everything that the city has asked?
It, it had to deal with the planning portion of it. And then that was, that was the, that was the strategy that she put in place as part of her plan. So, I, that's one, I think that's what it wants.
There's some terminology being in it, so there's some like there was something too between that needed to be done, like some repairs or something to make it safe, and that wasn't done.
Well, she did have some people in there. I don't know how much she got out of there. There were, there were people that were removing items.
Yeah, she, I mean, she stripped out the good stuff out of the building, and the fact that it makes the building safer. And, and that, and that's what I'm getting at. I, you guys try and talk while I find this reference.
Well, that was basically June sixth is the date that was agreed upon back in January.
Right.
And so once that comes up, then we'll go through the, the legal process to move forward, just like any other president. Well, I haven't known the script before, but I'll do the best I can.
We have, we have pretty.
Yeah. So the dangerous building hearing, so the dangerous building process is established by sixty-seven, three ninety-eight. Requires first a notice to the property owner that the building was dangerous and that the building either needs to be rehabilitated or demolished. That's the notice that's in front of in the counter packet and sets the hundred and eighty day initial deadline. There is an additional thirty day deadline in there. If you can work and continue, continue with that work throughout the timeframe. Once the notice period has run, then the city issues a notice of the hearing in front of the dangerous building commissioner, which is the city manager, but in all cities that we represent, we have, then the building commissioner appoints a, another attorney to sit as the hearing officer for U F D, uh, to sit, and then there's a hearing in front of her where the city presents the evidence and establishes that it implied with the notice provisions from the city code and also from Missouri law. And whether or not the building is to be rehabilitated or demolished, and the property owner is given an opportunity to either establish that the city did not imply with those notice requirements or that the building is not a dangerous building according to the code. And then after that hearing, the dangerous building commissioner, the building commissioner issues an order that gives the property owner thirty days to demolish or rehabilitate the property, and if they do not meet that time, that then gives the city facility to go and demolish or rehabilitate the property on their own.
When did the thirty days begin? When was that supposed to begin?
According to the letter, it would have been thirty days from the date of the letter. To have to have begun continuously without unnecessary needs for like repairing.
Right, and nothing was done. There was no repairs. There was no, and, and I have that letter here too. And it reads to me like something that there should have been a plan, should have been approved by the cities, it should have been repaired, it should have been made safe. If it wasn't, then the city should have had a meeting right then after that thirty days. That should have, what we're doing today should have been done months ago.
Well, so the typical process is to provide that thirty days, but in a lot of these situations, that initial thirty days is for the property owner, regardless of the property owner's position with the city, to acquire necessary professionals, you have engineers, architects, or whatever, and one thirty to a hundred and eighty days is usually a timeframe where you need to see the repairs. Typically, in a situation, if the building was rehabilitated and the property owner desired to rehabilitate it, they're never going to be able to come within the hundred and eighty day timeframe. But that's typically like for Trump, that hundred and eighty days is what most cities or hundred and eighty days is longer than some cities grant, but you gotta do a hundred and eighty days. That hundred and eighty days is really the final kind of block for the purpose of it. For then, for then going forward with the dangerous building.
But there should have been a good faith effort that we could see at that point.
And it turned in, you know? Then. It means most of it's all been verbal. Like today, I talked to the contractor that she's using, I talked to him on Friday.
I don't wanna know what you're doing to these people. I don't see it right.
She's, she's getting, she's getting, well, and the contractor said that since he was planting beans, he wasn't going to get. He thought that he was gonna get it to us by six, but apparently that didn't.
Is that fair to say? You can knock with a lot of buildings, you can't say you don't.
I'm sure he's a good guy, but the point is there should have been a contract signed presented with the city.
Well, it was not. That would be in any discussion on the next, yeah, in the next session. And I would suggest that we discuss this.
Okay, let's keep in mind that this began five years ago. There's people in Cameron that, that weren't even born then, that this has been going on so long, it's been delayed in those towns. It's been passed from one party to another. There, there's been so much neglect in my mind that was the city council in dealing with this, that I don't see that we need to spend a lot of time furthering it in that manner. I think that we need to be very deliberate about what we do and that we need to continue on and get this cleaned up. And for a number of reasons, not the least of which is the safety of the public, as well as the businesses that are downtown that, that have to deal with it. And like I've always said before, when people come to Cameron, they wanna go look at the schools and the parks, and they go, wow, this is a great city. It looks super. Let's look at the downtown, and then, wow, it's terrible. And when you see this kind of light in a city, then you know there's other problems here too. So I, I would like for us to deal with this right away, get this taken care of. I think everybody should read this letter that the city sent to her six months ago and see if, are we following that letter of the law there?
Are we, are we doing what we're supposed to do? And if we were, would you be in trouble?
Yes.
And would we take it serious?
Yes. I would also note that for situations such as this, no matter the size of the city, the cost of demolishing buildings of this nature is at minimum a hindrance. Do cities continue to push this? Because I will say, everybody remembers Chestnut Arms.
Yes, I was gonna say, this is not a for.
The, the city demolished that building, let's say ninety thousand dollars, I mean, on the property, because that is the most you can do. And then either the city could have been spent some not significantly needs to have me go foreclose that move or, as I said, sits on the property until most likely that item amount, the property transfer is in the post third year tax sale, where the meeting is like all of them.
Are we all looking at that similar to the other building that is?
One twelve, one twelve east third.
Yeah, we're looking at the same scenario.
Except on that one, since we worked with Mo Cam and Terracotta and Department of Natural Resources, so we're going to go into that and get grant funds to help. Let's see how much that's going to cost. And it already has between the asbestos checking and the, and the engineering reports were all done for, we got them done for free because it went through Mo Cam.
And the reason we were able to do that is because the owner is basically gone. Is that true? So to keep public space, he had to jump in.
And then went through the courts, and then went through that whole thing that we were just talking about, going in front of the judge.
The owner had an opportunity to show up. Did he show up?
Yep.
So that basically was a vacation. We're not talking about a vacation here. I mean, we're still an owner. So, this other one is the owner's abandonment. So the city did.
Well, we haven't officially taken.
No, we haven't, and we're gonna probably demolish it in a.
Oh, we're gonna demolish it. That, that's gonna be part of my report, because we got news on that today. But then after, after that's done, we'll put a lien on it. And then I put dollars to donuts, that he won't pay his taxes, and then it'll go to the tax sale.
So let's talk about what happened with Chestnut Arms and the, and the, when we asked for a new one.
It, I think I do believe this was purchased at the tax sale or just prior to it going to the tax sale.
I know they.
But, and then to. And then to.
It was before the tax sale? Okay.
Ensure that additional public funds were not, if it was purchased by another public entity, ensure that additional public funds were not, kind of, the city council are going to waive its minor portion of the budget. And I, I will say the entire process that we've described is why the city has, like, if you didn't know in the hundred percent demo program, you have the most typical outcome, when buildings are demolished, under dangerous building hearing, the property owner just walks away, and then without being sold for a very small amount at the, post third year tax.
And that's why we have so much new building over the last few years is because of that program, correct? Yeah. The third street, I just.
We've got three houses that are currently under construction that are.
Yeah, a lot that had ugly houses. So, so that was actually a model that won the city here an award two years ago. Yeah, so.
Well, I'd, I'd like to get back to this. So, once we do the winning, just like we would with anybody else, then she has one month.
Then, city staff and I will reach out to Judge Dan to get her availability. Okay, they come up and says, the hearing officer, she's usually generally available.
Okay.
Then, once that date is burned up, we will send the property owner the ten day or fifteen day notice of the dangerous building hearing. And the dangerous building hearing with her finding the fact and conclusion of the law will be adopted by the building commissioner. So it will be provided to the property owner. Under the very law, they didn't have thirty days to comply with that order. If they do not comply with that order, within thirty days, then the city's self-help remedy is available and the city can only demolish the building.
So if we go back and ask for the money that was paid to the, to the third party that somehow had access to the buildings, the eight thousand dollars, at least to recruit, I mean, any amount of money from that first purchase.
Under the dangerous building process, no, but tonight during closed session, we can discuss.
Talk about that? Okay. So let's talk about timings a little bit. So here we are, more than five years down the road. How long will this take? Can we get this done by the end of summer? Completed and cleaned up? No way. Let's see. And that's the point I'm making. Ever. And the point I'm making too is that I think it's ridiculous that taxpayers should have to pay any of this.
I agree.
I think that we should never let people walk away from their property, leaving it a mess for taxpayers to have to clean up. And, and I also don't like the idea that we just throw this out, oh, by the way, let me pay for half of that for you. I don't see people coming up at the gas station saying, let me catch that for you. No, this isn't the way life works, and I think, what, and I've seen this through the city in my forty years I've lived here, is we end up with empty lot after empty lot after empty lot that the city pays for. To, to tear down these buildings and leave, and I've had the city try to come to me and say, would you please take this lot? We're tired of mowing this and all that. So I, I would like to see this change, this mentality of, it's almost a welfare mentality with the city. And I know it's a useful tool when that's the only tool you have, but I see people just willfully neglecting their property, saying, I know the city can take care of this for me. And then they walk away. There's people that own these buildings that have a lot more money than the present owner. I, I think that's something that should have been tagged on them originally before that was passed along. Now, back to my question, if we reasonably expect it to be done by the end of the summer.
It would depend on who the fitters for the demolition, what their timeline would be.
Why are we not doing that now? This is something.
Yes, you do not know if the dangerous building, if the building commissioner will determine that the building is demolished.
And if we did it.
We've already been told this. These were condemned.
They were, they've never been condemned. They've received notice, the prior owners all received notice that they were dangerous. Then they were transferred to the restored preservation society. They operated under an agreement that they were, that they had five years from July sixth, twenty twenty-one, restore the buildings, restored preservation, then transferred its interest to.
Doesn't this letter say that they have to be, they, it does, it does say that it has to be, they have to be demolished or repaired?
Yes, but that is not the order of the dangerous building commissioner.
So what's the point of this? When it's.
That's the initial notice. You have deprocess rights when it comes to your property. So under Missouri law and under general, the fifth amendment of the United States Constitution, the more that the property interest goes up, the more notice and procedural deprocess is required. So once you start talking about demolishing people's buildings, property interest is the highest it can go. So there are two notices that Missouri law requires. You have the first one that was sent from Miss Reed, and then the second one is the notice and the opportunity for, for her to herd in front of the building commissioner.
And that was the one supposed to be after the thirty days?
That is the one that after the hundred and eighty days would, then that would be triggered that that could, or June sixth, the date. Because technically, the property owner could come in tomorrow with a bulldozer and get a demo permit and have it done.
Mayor Curtis, I am perfectly aware of that, and that's kind of condescending to say that.
Oh, I apologize. I just want, you can't do this.
No, I know that, but what I'm trying to do is defend our public and, and our property values in town. And, and I see no reason why we can't get bids on this because we've already been told that we have them, and I don't own.
We don't know. We can't have a bid. It's like if, if I came out here and said I wanna bid on your stuff to the city.
No, I don't mean me. We've been told by the owner that, that she has a bid and how much it is, and, and that could degenerate. No, he's told me that numerous times and told me the number, the cost of that. And, well, and, but it was a, it was an affordable number. It was, I was really surprised because, because I've had Mark Thompson and I talked about, and we've all, we've all talked about different numbers, and they were factory, different, huge numbers. So I thought, well, is this something that's doable? I mean, this isn't going to break the bank in the process of that. My only interest, I, I don't wanna argue with anybody, but my interest is getting them torn down, if that's the direction it's going, and expediting this. Because weather is here to be considered, everybody knows that. We, when we get up to, to the fall, I don't wanna say, well, maybe next year we'll get around to doing that. Because that's what the city has done. Five years for these dangerous and block of eight buildings, five years is, they've been allowed to stand there, and then all the walls are falling down. People have gotten in and vandalism has been done, and it's ugly, and it decreases the value of every home, every property, every business in the. People have gotten in and vandalism has been done and it's ugly and it decreases the value of every home, every property, every business in this town. It literally has, has a tangible, uh, uh, effect on the value of these properties. So.
But we didn't own it for five years. He's saying that they gave ownership over there thinking that they were gonna do something. Now, whether or not that was the right thing with you or not, I don't know. It wasn't here.
I know, but that's the point I'm making is that should never have been done. Well, five years.
But we can't go back now and.
No, but, but I'm saying that this whole process is going on and on and on.
Yes, now that agrees with it.
Yeah. And I'd like, and I'd like, everybody can know how important it is to make some investments to getting this. And we didn't. I don't want us to take this casually and just say, whatever, we'll get to it eventually, you know, there's.
I don't think that's the meaning of that.
I asked for the lien. I asked for resigning, so no, I don't think I was taking it.
So I'll, I'll stop my rant, but can we get some, uh, reasonable date when we could expect this to be done?
When I talked to our contractor, he said he could get it all four knocked down within thirty days after it gets started.
Okay, and then, uh.
And that's all gonna be dependent on going through the.
Right, the paperwork.
The, well, and it's not our paperwork, it's the legal statutes of the state of Missouri. That's where we run into problems.
Now, I've heard stories about possibly passing the ownership to somebody else. Is that possible?
Yes, but that we're not changing anything.
So we could still find, um, the new owner to this same date, the same.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's comforting. Everybody in town is asking that question. And these are the answers that they want to hear. So, and then what, what would your estimate be on a reasonable amount of time to go through the process?
Again, depending on Judge Dan's availability, uh, the finding of the fact that conclusions law after the hearing, when the, I mean, she may direct me on what decision she has decided to reface on the confidence potential evidence presented at that hearing. It'll be done within a couple hours. So I'm gonna give forty five days until the thirty days is run on her order from.
Sixth.
Yeah, from the sixth.
So this could be done by the summer. You know, that just makes me feel so much better. And, and Lamp and I talked about this. I, Patrick and Lamp, I appreciate your work on it and, and I know so much has been done behind the scenes and we appreciate that. Thank you. That's all.
There's something in the country called private property rights.
Yeah.
It's slow, bureaucratic, nobody likes it, but nobody would want a municipal government condemning somebody's property. And we've gone through the legal process, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'm a little confused. After June fifth, or one of her hundred and eighty day dates. All this, to me, these verbals and all this stuff, we haven't seen anything. The only, only time that we come in as a city, we can't come in as a municipality to, oh, we're gonna partner with, with A, B, C, D and E. Only time we come in is to condemn it, knock it down, and haul it to the ditch, correct?
Or alternatively, the city, the city has the stick, which is what we're talking about right now. But the carrot is the chapter three, three redevelopment plan that the city council also adopted that tried, attempted to encourage property owners to reinvest and to see property back payment for that reinvestment. So those are, those are the two times that the city gets involved. Is when a property owner has decided that they would like to rehabilitate their building and we can provide the carrot of property tax payment. Or when they decide not to invest and they get to the point where they're a dangerous building and we can utilize the stick that is what it seems to be right now.
So after June fifth, buildings are condemned. Right, the private owner, the city doesn't own the property, can still come in and go through a process to haul the building away.
Yes. Okay, and I will, again, say one of the not uncommon things is you still can give them all the time. Because ultimately, the city does not want to be the one, like with Captain Arms, that has incurred the cost. And thus, the taxpayers have incurred the cost, which instead of spending money on whatever other, you know, idea, which is.
But she, as the owner, right now is the last resort and we're the next resort. There's no other, we're gonna, we condemn, we haul it to the ditch, and then we're stopped with it.
I think every city in the state of Missouri's preference would be to the property owner.
Well, I would think so.
Yeah, to undertake whatever the danger, whatever the building commissioner noted, or the building official noted in this initial letter.
So we've been crossing all the T's, dotting the I's, going through the process of not trying to stick that taxpayers with this deal, correct?
Yes.
Okay, question. Why was LeBron Jewelry invested if their building wasn't, never, never considered to be unsafe?
I do not, I'm not an engineer. I know that the initial notice that was provided to the original owners of the three buildings was accompanied with an engineering report. And I do believe that the building of Mr. LeBron was also considered dangerous due to the condition of the hull. Look, whenever you, whenever you get into older downtowns like this.
Yeah.
Because a lot of the buildings share a common wall, when one building starts to go, it could cause issues with adjoining ones.
We had a.
I know. I mean, I knew, I knew the answer to that question, but I wanted everybody to know the answer to that question. I talked a long time to Steve today. No, he wasn't happy, but you know, I, I will say this to, to the city council. Is he's a reasonable person. He's a nice person. He's an understanding person. He knows about the condition of these others. And he told me, he says, he told me today, he says, I would rather see it torn down than to see it like this. And, you know, his family had a hundred and twenty five years in this business and it's really sad. He did say that he has a great vision city that there's two steel seams in the front. And he said Shelley wouldn't know all about that. He says he has a letter from the city saying, saying he can keep those because it's part of the facade. And he, for, uh, for his family's interest, he wanted to keep that. So I want that on record that that was what.
I would probably need a copy of that because finding it now.
The city has a copy of it.
I think we have a copy of it, but I don't remember what I had to watch. I don't know where it is.
I hear you.
Okay, thank you.
So we cut our discussion.
Do you have a question?
Well, we will, we're scheduling this on the examiner board in the next week.
Um, there's no further council action necessary.
Where do we go from here?
The, the building commissioner.
Okay.
That's the next and final step.
And when will that be issued?
Uh, we'll reach out to Judge Dan tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we can't officially rule anything. We'll again, see if there are any dates that are available.
Thank you. We love the team. Still waiting on that. Yeah, we're going for it.
You run the sirens and set up that later.
No. All right, let's take this to the next discussion item, which is rebranding our businesses and tagline. Before we get started on that, I just have something that I'd like to review, if you don't mind. I've just kind of been watching this all going on and not really knowing what to think and just kind of lay low. And, um, I've been serving with New Look Camera Residence for about twenty years. The gentlemen, the folks, a lot of people when they come to town, I don't think have a lot of energy about how much you like it here. But they are very pleased to be here. And I am always thrilled over the last twenty years that you've moved from out of state to where I think you're earning out a hard earned. So as I watch this develop, um, this is, these are my thoughts. Just kind of set the mood, that's okay? Shannon has done her research over the community. She read all the information she gave us, the council, and the answers to questions she has on her homework on the people that have grown before us in this community. She's only been here seventeen years and has the gumption and the heart to learn, communicate, and persevere in handling identity. So let us coalesce and continue to develop. I was at a E, E doc meeting in South East, something with us, other, where the school board president and the chamber one is in need of the city and the city residents to surprise who we are. What kind of mission statement? We didn't have one, but we don't, oh, we have, just something, a little more that they can buy their, their teeth into, to bring in two new school patrons in visiting. At this point, with all the big main truck stops that are and will be coming to send and send you boots and luck to locate here, I think it's a great and most opportunist time to make a claim on who we are. If anyone has read Shannon's research on this community, she has touched the latest type of people that started businesses and gave a unique personality to this community path. With a brand, a prime example. See, I stated their hundred and fifty, uh, two years ago and I got to say a place about their family. Oh, my gosh, they such, reached out to the community. One of them was a hunter. So there's all kinds of hunting stuff in the La Brine. Anyway, if you've ever gone to the historical society cemetery tours the past few years, you would have learned of the most interesting and brave people that live here and what they did. It's amazing. You guys should go to those, it's amazing. That have gone before us with startup of nothing but an idea. Because of survey area, these businesses became well-known in Northwest Missouri and some larger known regions of Northwest Missouri. We were placed here to be takers, but to serve our area. Shannon has learned that and desires to capture it in a tagline or city market. I think we as a city, city should explore who we are. And thanks to Shannon's diligence and perseverance, she brought it to life. I believe Shannon is right, and now it's time to decide our direction as a community. I didn't plan on it, it just kind of fell like a bell out. But I will, but I will say, over the years, I, the, the people out in the cemetery, again, are just amazing, so.
Well, she'll have a chance to.
Yeah, we passed a, uh, ordinance to permit because there was a few people that wanted to have like the, uh, outside of retail, they wanted to have like a a glitter, I suppose, or space, I feel, in fact, it's, uh, planning going, let's do it. You know, we kind of stood our head on that deal and did that. You know, might, might want to do a wine head, I think, in the deal, uh, and I, I already didn't care. But nothing will come through of it yet. You know, if somebody wants to. It starts, the, the rebranding started out as a logistical area. Kind of in the, uh, downtown area for someone to go and apply for grants for a mural, a mural on their, inside their building. And it's kind of got a, uh, life of its own, it's kind of grown. I, uh, I didn't have an issue with that, but then we did vote to rebrand the whole town and cross over to the nation through three across it. I don't, of course, we don't have any problem with a small, small area. But I, I probably do have a little issue with rebranding the whole town. I think it gives both, maybe both people what they wanted, just in a rebranding of a small area, but creating districts, if they want to have large festivals and things like that, I, you know.
Well, that's kind of what I thought we did too, but when we voted on it, it blew up.
Then it kind of just got like a life of a dome and started growing.
Well, and that's what I thought we were aiming to do, to create that district. Apparently, we have not created the district yet. We just talked about.
We rebranded the whole town.
Yeah, we rebranded the whole town.
Tagline is not necessarily rebranding the entire town, but I'm kind of of the, uh, build it and they will come and rebuild it and they will come because look at all the people, as Jack was saying, that have been here in the past and have been incredible. And really has, the town has gone into, he's gone back through the depression and then the recession and then COVID. But there's definitely possibilities to come back. It would be nice to people that were creative and maybe some of the more mainstream creative who'd be here. But not only that, for the people that are here, to give them some kind of a dice identity, decide to go ball one of these and golf one of these and, I mean, all those things are great, but we have a lot of musicians here, we have a lot of artists here, we have a lot of writers here, we have poets. We have fashion designers, we have, and they all leave because we don't give them any reason to stay.
Is that what you saw in San Francisco, was all those people leaving? Coming to you in San Francisco, we appreciate you taking them home.
I feel like that's a little bit.
That might be, but hey, I still appreciate you.
There are definitely, there are definitely artists in the world who would want to have a place to be. Who are not. I'm not saying they're gonna come. I say they're gonna already be here. Let's nurture them. Well, then maybe let's nurture, nurture, yeah. Well, anyway. I, I really believe.
Are you gonna weigh in for him, Parker?
I think so, yeah.
I'm good.
You know, I did, I kind of disagree with you a little bit, you know, I would agree to disagree. You know, markets change. You know, you're not gonna bring back, bring back Andy Drennan and the Drennan shoes. I didn't go to Cameron High School, but all these old towns are the same, right? You're not gonna bring back the little western auto. Markets change, things change. People say that Cameron isn't this or Cameron isn't that. Get in your car and ride around the Cameron School District. All the, I, I, I say that there's three times as much growth outside the city of London than it was in nineteen seventy five. People say, well, Cameron's not doing it. If Cameron's not doing that, well, I, I disagree with that. You know, you have Third Street, uh, what it used to be, you know, it's been replaced by the Amazon stuff, but that's all over the country. Markets change and I don't know if it's gonna be the top notch artsy-bartsy place of Northwest Missouri, but, you know, I'm. Well, you got a good point there, but I, I don't know.
We've had, we have two bins.
You have a financial interest in this.
Do I have a financial interest in this?
Because you told me before you were wanting these buildings so that you could use them for the art district. And you also told me before that you wanted them so that you could.
Yeah, but I also quit, we had it on my plan that I'm gonna sell that. I really don't want to be a property owner. I just want to keep it forward in progress.
You, but you had this big plan about the, um, about the plaza. You were gonna have.
I've had that big plan since I went to the Main Street Convention in Kansas City three years ago. And I've been yap, yap, yapping about it at Main Street ever since. I don't think some of our Main Street people are here tonight.
Let me weigh in on this a little more.
Jesse's here. Have I not been yap, yap, yapping about? Yeah.
I'm an artist.
Well, you didn't go to the state conference and, did you go to the state?
No, I heard about it.
I've been to the last three state conferences. There's one huge thing. Now, I've been involved with Main Street since twenty twenty. In fact, I got people mad at me for sticking with Main Street because I was talking about things like the, oh, you know, maybe Cameron isn't ready for this. I tried to get a historic district started.
Well, I think Cameron is ready for it.
I really.
We just had a hot air balloon, hot air balloon deal going on. And the great thing about it, nobody came to Cameron, came to us, asked for taxpayer money. People got together and they just did it themselves. Nobody asked planning and zoning to do this. Nobody asked the council to do this. They just took the bull by the horns and they did it. They just took the bull by the horns and they did it.
Has anybody asked for money for a creative?
Well, I don't know.
Well, we in groups, no. And nobody were asked for money for the historic district either. It's just that people were very resistant and the paperwork involved is incredible. The paperwork involved for the arts district is much less and is much more accessible then. If we wanted to have a historic district, we would have to have somebody on a committee that met four times a year that reported to the state historic preservation office and who had some kind of degree in their archaeology, history, geology.
Are we picking up? Hey, you know, Dana, you just, I was kind of forced. You said all this bureaucracy to get the paperwork. You just helped me out.
Well.
If it's that bureaucratic, we don't need it.
And what if a grant money for?
Grant money would be for classes, for children. Help me out here. Any kind of arts program, art, grant, art, people who have a know-how in that, in that area and then, you know, there's, there's a process.
Is there administrative fees taken out of grant money? Does anybody benefit personally? There will never be somebody getting paid out of the grant money.
And I don't know either. I don't, I don't think people in Hannibal will get paid. But not, I don't know my mind. Yeah.
Can I say something, Dana?
Well, absolutely.
I appreciate you too, Gina. Thank you. Okay, so in the beginning of this, I wasn't on city council. I was just attending meetings. I saw this council pass something that I thought, I don't even think they knew what they passed. Well, you just kept saying deny, you did not. People were saying deny, so we, no, this is what, listen to what people said. They thought they were, they were going to have a district. They thought, they didn't know that they're going, some of you didn't know that you were going.
Like, oh, it's a geographical area.
Yeah, rebrand the entire city and, and, oh. So the one thing that I noticed was there was no discussion about this. The entire city got rebranded and not one person in the city out here. There was no candace thing. There was no statistics. There was no public hearing. Um, there were no community boards or advisory council set up to coordinate this. And that should have been done to benefit you. That should have been done. Candace thing should have been done. It's just common sense. You go around and you ask people, you want this? Then we heard about three by six block district and wanting to make a district out of it. But there again, I talked to a lot of people that would have been in this district and they didn't even want to be in that district. And I talked to Dan, is he the president of the Old School? So he's a traitor. So I asked him about it and he said, I don't want to be a part of it. I don't want the Old School to be a part of this district. And so that, that was an issue. There's, there's measurable harm that can happen when you rebrand. And you've heard me say this before, but not everybody here has heard me say this. If you rebrand something the wrong way, there is measurable harm that happens. And, and I think a lot of people look into this a lot deeper than just saying, well, that would be fun because I heard that said on this council when it was first proposed. I heard that said, well, that would be fun without any talk. It, it involves some misrepresentation or disappety practices, let me tell you. I would, is Sue here? Ma'am. Is she hiding? I proposed to her, I think that we should rebrand the north end of town. We have a wonderful Chinese restaurant and I think we should call that China Town. Well, that's the same thing. Nobody, nobody would want to do that in that area. And I own property in this area. I don't want it to be rebranded in, in that fashion. So the reason is, is because it just doesn't fit the purposes that I have for my businesses and buildings. It can erode the public trust. When we do this, let me tell you, folks, it erodes the public trust. People look at the council and think, what the hell are they doing now? Because they look at that like an element of incompetence when we've done something like this. That's not good. We have a lot of business to take care of. It's serious business. And we have to work with people. They have to respect us. And they have to think that we are competent in what we're doing and don't just do things out of whimsy. It can, it can damage our identity, our civic identity when we have two major truck stops going into town. Why is that? Why is it? We've got lots of truck stops. We have lots of buildings related to the fact that we have two interstate highways that crosses right here. And that's exactly why we are the crossroads of the nation. That's why people are coming here.
Well, that's in cheap land.
That is cheap land, but, but it's also a geographic thing. If people, when they, they don't do buildings just because, oh, well, that's cheap. Let's spend a hundred million dollars on it. They do it like, where is it located? Is that the right distance from another intersection truck stop? They do all the maps and we have it here. This is what we need. But they don't do it because they say, whoa, they're really creative up there. Let's put a truck stop there. That doesn't happen. Residents feel alienated. People just like in San Francisco. They will say, I don't fit this place anymore. And I've seen that in towns around here when things have changed so much, for good or for bad. If it's good, people move there. If it's bad, people say, I'm going to go move somewhere else. And I think that's something that we really need to consider is our identity. Are we selling this identity of the, the crossroads of the nation? We are because we are promoting it. But I don't know how you work in that. When I talk to people about the creative crossroads, they say, first thing, what does that mean? And I'm like, I'm with you. What does that mean? We can, uh, we can have protests and backlash. People can say, well, I'm not going to buy property there or I, I don't want to move here. What, what if you did a district and you had this district? And it's like what you're saying in San Francisco. And I have family that lives in San, San Francisco. I go there a lot. But I'm like, hmm, I don't want to be there. I don't want, I don't want to be, especially there are certain times of the year when there's celebrations of different things. Because that, that changes everything when you start having stuff going on that interferes with your personal business. We don't want that. There's political consequences. People here on city council, they may not get elected again if, if that happens. It's very polarizing. We, and we talked about the financial consequences. I don't think anybody in this town wants to spend fifty or a hundred thousand dollars. We're out, I spent three days helping with the bowling staff. And I was talking to some of the EMS and they say, yeah, we even have that branded on our shirt. I'm like, I know. It's everywhere. The crossroads of the nation is our brand and that's everywhere. A city that re, a city rebranded that doesn't involve or reflect its residents can do more harm than good. A, a rebrand that lacks authenticity, transparency, and engagement are key to ensuring a rebrand failure and many problems in the future. I am horrified that anybody on city council would agree to rebrand this whole city. I've said the door and I've told Shannon, I would be supportive if she wanted to do, or this group wanted to do a rebrand of a district. But before that happened, I would want to have councils with the people. I would want to have people that are business owners and property owners and, and own houses in that area like I do. I would want somebody to come to me and say, hey, did you know what we're thinking about doing this? Come to this meeting and let us talk about it. I would want there to be a vote. I think there should be at least two thirds of the people that, uh, have a financial interest and personal interest in that district to be able to say yes before that's done. And otherwise, it should never be done. How would you go about rebranding somebody that they didn't want to be rebranded or they didn't even know it? You just pick out a block and say, or you pick out eighteen blocks. Say, you are now rebranded. Good luck with that. So I'll leave it at that.
All right, so this is session here. Okay, so we pretty much established that that was probably not a good thing what we did. And therefore, what do you guys think we need to do?
I would note for the mayor and council, there's a resolution immediately proceeding following this discussion that rescinds the prior resolution and correct staff to study what the creation of a district would entail and to present that to the council at the first meeting in the hall.
I don't. I, I would like to say, I don't want to deal with this right now. We've got, these guys have got too much stuff. We need to push it back a little farther. Let's get the, let's get the details that you're talking about. But let's, you know, every one of you are doing two jobs. I don't want to be throwing extra stuff on my mouth. It doesn't make sense. But let's go ahead and vote on it. Let's go ahead and do that. And then let's encourage that. And, I mean, this group, they can put together a package and come up with something more complete than just how weird my grain, vote on it. Let's vote to attend that and then we'll go on. In the future, we'll discuss it. And as we've talked about before, uh, I would like to see creative things done. I'd like to see a, a focus of creativity that would justify the, the critical mass needed to establish that place and where we want this, this to be. Uh, I, I think that would be reasonable. I think that would be appropriate and it would be fair to the property owners. So how do we, with your consent, without that thing?
Just, yeah, first, let me do the first and the second and then I'll provide a motion.
We're going to move on. Adam. So we're passing the session. We've had that.
One last question. Steve Rasmussen said that when it was passed the first time, it wasn't done appropriately. And it wasn't binding. He told me that, that there was something left out of that process. Is that true?
I do not know how your initial tagline across the nation was developed.
Well, it was a vote. It was taken. It was. Did you know anything about that?
The thing that was missing was the district. That was what was.
That wasn't what he said.
Yeah.
It was the procedure. We said the procedure was not done. Well, I'll just drop it, Gina, because it really isn't, yeah.
Yeah, well, from what I understood, because me and I had a meeting about it and I assumed that we were doing a district and it didn't get that. It didn't get anything.
But you know what? That's a warning. If we're voting on stuff and we don't know what we're voting on, watch out. That's, that's a formula for disaster.
Okay, let's move on. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty showing. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty, a resolution rescinding resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirteen that approved and update to the tagline for the city of Cameron Missouri and directing city staff to take first action. How will we obtain a motion to pass resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty?
Hold on.
Discussion.
Uh, based on the prior discussion, the city council would like to entertain a motion to amend resolution twenty twenty-five dash three zero to remove the paragraph starting with further staff. That would be a order.
And how would that change that?
It would take out the city staff needing to provide something new regarding the creation of a district.
Is this a resolution that we're talking about?
No, you're looking at the previous resolution.
The line?
Yep.
So it, so it doesn't lock us in the subsequent. Second.
So where?
Um, so first, a vote on the resolution, woman.
All in favor of the motion to win?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
So now it would be a vote on the resolution.
All those in favor of passing resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty as amended, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
The board speakers, you want to oppose?
New business.
Full reading of bill twenty twenty-five dash twenty. Showing, bill twenty twenty-five dash twenty enordens asserting a plan for an industrial development project promoted group LLC authorizing the city of Cameron Missouri to issue its taxable industrial development revenue bond, promoted group LLC, TA Travel Center Project, Series Twenty Twenty Five, in a principal amount not to exceed twenty million five hundred thousand dollars to finance the cost of that project and authorizing and approving certain documents and other actions in connection with the issuance of the bond. How will we obtain a motion to pass a first reading of bill twenty twenty-five dash one?
Hold on.
Second.
Discussion.
Uh, mayor, members of council, as was discussed at the last city council meeting. This is the second part of the Cameron Cross Means Development. This is for the city to issue industrial revenue bonds to provide a certain amount of activation to the developer. Under chapter one hundred, the city first adopt a plan for industrial development, then the city provides notice to taxing entities that they may provide comment. It will happen after my discussion. And then during the period that the bonds are issued, the city acting under which were loans, the property and listed to the property owner, developer. During that time, the city's property, uh, there is not subject to add-on and property taxes. Under the proposed chapter one hundred plan and the rules that go along with it, uh, the developer would receive property tax abatement of ninety percent for years one through fifteen, seventy-five percent for years sixteen through twenty, and fifty percent for years one one through twenty-five. The total amount of the property tax abatement is just under two point seven million dollars. During the period of the property tax abatement, the developer has agreed to make payments in lieu of taxes that will be provided to the city and the city receives those through the taxing jurisdiction. Uh, in years one through fifteen, it is estimated to be about thirteen thousand dollars a year. In years sixteen through twenty, it is estimated to be about thirty-five thousand dollars a year. And years one one through twenty-five is estimated to be seventy-five thousand dollars a year. The current amount of add-on and property taxes that the taxing jurisdictions have received for twenty-five years to the project not being reflected is a total of eighteen thousand five hundred and seventy-one dollars. Under the current plan, the taxing jurisdiction has received more than they would for twenty-five years after year fifteen. Um, following the twenty-five year property tax abatement, property would be subject to full add-on and property taxes with the estimated appraised value increasing on the property from current fifty-one thousand six hundred and two dollars to an estimated five million twenty-six thousand seven hundred dollars. Amy Crumpin from Bill One, federal city spawn council, who's also here tonight, the working manager after of the document, will answer any additional questions. Uh, the developer is also here again tonight. Um, and following any direction that they may have, I believe it would be appropriate for the council to invite the taxing entities providing comments that they want. So Amy, the developer wants to say anything or anything else?
Speech.
Um, this time, this is the council that has been taxing entities here for. I mean, this time, this is a council that has been taxing entities here for like a...
From Paxton Park, the vice commissioner from the county. First of all, I want to see the other taxing entity. The latter has his own address. Has to go with the thing all. I had to call, find out if it's here. I really don't have an issue personally with it. I think we gave away too much for too long. We're currently getting ready to sign one in the county. Six hundred, almost six hundred million dollar project. Almost half of what he said. I think... It just gave away too much.
I would also note that the reasons have gone for a full reading tonight as it was intended that the first reading would occur with the CID. Unfortunately, the city's spam filter caught the email of Mr. Crumpin to Shelley. And so, she never received the document. There's no, uh, power to order the last meeting. And so, instead of having the developer come up for three meetings, then the others come up with a lot of people there carrying a certain need of a test to that for a full reading.
I'm a little concerned with the fact that if we sent out something and it didn't have the right address, I'm thinking we need to hold it back if we're able to do it. But that doesn't seem unfair, or it doesn't seem quite fair that we would not send it out with the correct address. Who didn't? Correct address, so...
Yours is probably better.
I know, but you're here.
I don't...
Yeah. So, you're here, so you have that information. I don't know who else didn't get it. I'm just saying, if there's other taxing...
The school district, and they didn't come to the last meeting. Not this one.
The city's school.
The town. And...
I know, but I don't remember what it was.
The school didn't come to those last meetings.
I think the health department slipped it on there.
Anybody who gets the tax...
S B, we're all good.
Special review three.
Yeah.
I'm confused, councilor. And we talked about this. Maybe exactly as though in private or anything else, I asked you, we asked you, that this wasn't anything special. We weren't giving away the form. This was the standard program that we do. Is that correct?
Yeah, this, and again, this city was provided with a pro forma from the developer that showed that even with this amount of incentives, the rate of return is just barely above what would make the project financially feasible. The council remembered there was an initial request that included a higher level.
And we turned it down.
And that was whittled down to this because this was the amount that could get us to still a reasonable rate of return, but not anything above what they'd considered financially feasible.
Did we do anything for love when they came out with only council?
No.
We did not do love.
Same, same basic program?
Loves did not request anything.
They inputted, they, this outfit, they put it a little bit more.
This is supposed to be some reconstruction of the on-ramp?
There is a significant amount of efficient and public improvements. That is what actually caused the project. That plus the site reading, working to affirm their property caused the project to no longer load-out requirements required caused it to no longer be financially feasible for incentives. Because that's what the council made note during prior, we discussed the meaning improvement literature. There's about three twenty-eight million dollars of potential modot improvements that are required. We utilize incentives, we utilize incentives specifically to overcome significant increases in political improvements that may make it so that projects cannot occur. And that's what it's...
Kind of like...
Happening, yes. And this still total amount of incentives provided to the project is still what one percent of prior and last month.
Keeping in mind that when loves came in here, they were the only entity that was occupying that area out there. So, they had the greatest benefit. The next person that comes along has competition. So, it was good for us, but it's also nice to give them something.
Well, I would also...
They're going to be getting... They're going to get gummed now, but not before all the time from when they're built.
Right. I would also note that when loves being there first, there were no modot required improvements.
Yeah.
Because of the...
That's the graphic count.
At that time, I believe the... Those who were involved, but I think all that modot, modot came back with nothing. And then, within discussions, I think the someone maybe that occurred, but then nothing significant was ever... About the bridge. But due to this being the second facility, modot has required significant improvements to the area that's already in it.
Ramp with all the trucks being stuck on the ramp to get in there. They knew that the trucks didn't get on the highway and modot. And they sat, that modot looked as if it lost pain, and that was not an issue there. And now that we got the second one, modot pressed in, and then huge things have changed.
I would also note that the loves site in and of itself, the love decided to get a portion of the property that is flat by not going to a different amount. I think all of this, every time I kind of think how the property sales would make this property most likely financially feasible to develop just in and of itself into that initial building. Of course, you probably went through like, probably one impact. It's still basically a bridge. Wonderable. What about the bridge? So, the city is still currently undergoing the process of, and again, with the addition of this new travel center, a global T V for the area, transportation development district, that can help fund. And I will say that when we initially started looking at fixing the bridge, there was a not insignificant gap in the funding that was provided by T V. But now with a second travel center and additional development, there, the gap has shrunk.
Talking about a calendar gap, how long?
No, I'm talking, I'm talking a month gap.
Let me guess. Okay, so then, how long would it take to generate the money for me to replace that bridge?
I think the last estimate we had was sixteen million dollars to replace that bridge. And a user such as this would contribute, in addition to loves and other businesses in the area, would contributing up whether it's a potential that T V in and of itself could be the fifty-fifty funding source with modot. And the city would not have to pledge any of its revenues.
That's huge. That's really good.
We'll get a better engineer element whenever it's retired. And we, the city is going through the design process right around the wholesome. We make that part of my, I'm sorry, I get confused.
That'll make the hospital...
And it will make, and they've been contacted about the difference.
Right.
Probably get suited in.
It'll also make the general travel through that intersection significantly easier. I will note that, again, I get off there a lot. And while it's not big of a hassle, those ramps, plus the trucks, plus the bridge, plus another one, the bridge would be very welcome to travel to Cameron.
There was an armadillo fell out there.
It's reported. So, anyway...
So, let's be perfectly clear, councilor. It's easy to come up here and accuse somebody of giving away the farm. And in your opinion, advising private, uh, laypeople still didn't have...
I would say the fact that, one, the taxing jurisdictions will receive more by year three than they would have received for twenty-five years, plus the addition of additional revenue and the pro forma provided to us by the developer helps to establish that this is not an over incentiveized project.
Thank you. Okay, again, we still have, and I did find, I couldn't find the entity right off the top of my head at first, there's eight taxing entities. So, it's not just the county and the school. There's eight listed. So, are we, are we able to push it back to you? I'd like to get them, I mean, I think it's only fair that they have the same, uh, same chance to come up here if they received incorrect information as well. I know, were they, I'm assuming, Shelley, that they were all sent to... Were they all sent by?
I think the air party was all, I don't think so.
You didn't send that one?
I don't think so.
I would say, I would say my good ones all got...
Oh, okay.
Wasn't happy, you have the wrong address. Seen all of them. Right, well, I understand. So, yeah, I definitely want to push it back to you. I would support that. I don't want to, but I...
Well, I don't want to.
Yeah, I agree with you, John.
I'd love to get it done tonight, but...
I think, and I apologize to these guys. I just want everybody to be playing up and up. They have been notified and they have outstayed the year and they just... What they need.
Well, they were all notified. They always do. They went out to the current entities. They just got the address of where...
Well, that's what I mean. Yeah, they went out to the current entities at the wrong address. We're notifying the wrong address for the meeting.
Yes.
And I've done that. I've wandered up to the wrong places.
I have.
Do you want to, to sign out if you want to pass our first reading and read the second meeting?
You can do that. And then, you can work to get an additional... Just letter out to the taxing jurisdiction.
A letter explaining why they were notified at the wrong location that recommend that they come with that. I would support that. I think, you know, I think... Sounds like a good compromise.
I think people can think through this. If you jump the voting, you're totally there. They keep coming with all their phones. That's just my opinion.
Unless they don't know anybody.
I'd like to hear from them of what happens.
No, we're just saying...
No, we're not voting anyway.
We wouldn't vote on it.
We're not doing votes tonight.
Right, because that was the only thing that...
Is there going to be a problem for you?
You want to work with the city. Hi, everyone. My name is Paul Dan. I work for the Blue Will. I'm here with a lot of great customers. We're going to need to see the city. That's what we like to do back there.
Where do you have to drive from?
Kansas City.
Yeah.
Actually, it's the way to go. It's okay. We love coming here. Once we open up, we'll hear what you're doing.
You know, that's what a question I was going to ask everybody. You're going to have a restaurant in the place. We're going to have... You know, we've been spoiled here. We got loves. They're a great neighbor. Haven't had a problem. I hope you bring, I hope you bring three quarters as good a product as they are and the other truck stuff that we have. I think you'll be very successful if you do. Especially if you have a sit-down restaurant.
That's the plan.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You follow.
The calorie goes back. Do you want that in the revenue?
I don't think that should be in here.
I don't know. I'm just hungry. I just have to hurry.
You need a Culver.
No.
You need a Culver. It wouldn't be good.
Good night, great food.
All right, we're going to pass this first reading only tonight, not a full reading. Better go to the first reading.
First reading and stop there.
All right. Any other comments? All right.
Well, it's all over, babe.
Right.
I'm moving on. Second.
You guys are reading that part. All in favor of passing the bill twenty twenty-five dash twenty on a first reading? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Good. That takes us to our second public participation. For those who'd like to come up, you are welcome to come up. I mean, you may have a vote. Oh, this is good. That, that might be good. This is a couple of women there. It was a, it was a very interesting one. I think the hot air affair, she's not on this, like, connected with this bridge. But I think her creativity during the, seeing the hot air force was amazing. It was a complete example, a view of the example of what the creative can do. It would be wonderful if we could build on that thing and just call it a camp. But it's not today. So, also, just to clarify, creativity is not just a dream or a wonder. It is a multi-dimensional development process, just for me. So, when I'm talking about this, it revolves about, I'm using all the words, all the time. So, was there some kind of, oh, it's just sort of that team that you've been keeping? What are you thinking? So, just, I wanted to make sure that that was what you meant. The last thing is that I heard about Shrum, Shrum. Oh, no, Shrum.
That's my last name. I went to Jewish university, remember?
I'm Shrum. I actually had heard your, your concern before, before today. And so, I was like, oh, so I did a little research. And that's, that's why I, it's just like, an O P C Q, but it's not the same as a creative district. And I'm for the strong back myself. I hope many people who are not in that category would have creative camps. I did some research, and most creative districts don't even have creative development. Those kind of things. And I can, just on a personal level, I can tell you from my own experience of my funding days, you will never come up with a non-competitor. Because you've never been set in, you've never been, because we have, we're prepared sometimes. And so, no, I don't think we have a problem with that. It's a bunch of shady organizations. They're like, it's no, they're no better. So, I think that would fall in there. But there's plenty of other areas that can be talked about. It was beneficial. I can continue on. And I talked to several organizations, like private security organizations in the county higher school of it, that they're willing to do things they want to do. So, even though this is disappointing, I will be, well, I'm providing, so that's going to happen.
Gary Sherman, I was doing... I was concerned when we talked about rebranding. And we discussed a little bit that there is no cost. Well, there's always a cost somewhere. And before we get even discuss it again, there always should be a cost benefit in that also, where there's a payback by a certain date. And does that date twenty years on down the road that it's not working? So, if there's a cost benefit that had to hard date that contributed to the city and impacted rather soon, then I would, we need to stick with who we are, not to give us a new name. So...
Very interesting. Um, not a relation at all, we actually say it different. Do I say Kristin's room? They say Christians' room, even though it's probably their thing. Um, me and my husband were born a lot greater than that. Um, that's why, that's what you're on, that, um, that shared, shared his positive feeling, he came here for a purpose. Came here for a reason, he loves family, he absolutely adore it. Um, we actually bought it with sort of the time, the health and the support and the gift, most beloved home. And he decided, and how do you think it's shared? Um, but we, we bought with our demands and took the purpose of this point and, um, giving it back to people. Um, very much I'm hesitant to share because sometimes the backlash, when you're trying to preach yourself or give yourself help or say that you want to benefit the community, um, it really won't care. And, um, one thing that I've, I've noticed without here, I am, I am a creative person. And there was a quote in, um, somebody who's been acting forward in the paper, asking me if families are not creative people. And, um, I, I actually kind of, I was like, hey, that's, that's not a compliment. For me personally, I'm a interior designer, um, my husband is in construction management. Um, built custom homes for more than two to ten years before switching jobs to get him to buy his home and give it a, a different life at the center. Um, I, I am, the biggest reason why I'm here today is, is, I, I'm a, I'm a very conservative person, you know, creative. And there are a lot of people that are like us. It's not, like Hannah had shared earlier, creativity is not defined by a creative people, the way that you vote or any other quote. It is, it is inherently just something that you like to do. Um, I'm terrified to be standing here today because I am not terrified of backlash from city people. Um, but I just want, there are people that, there aren't a lot of people that hold the values of Cameron and stick with those values and believe in that wholeheartedly and, um, I'm not looking to, to bring anything that Cameron doesn't appreciate, that he loves or wants.
But, yeah, I live on Nelson Road. And come to very many city hall, uh, meetings. But I monitor them, I watch most of them on TV as I can. And, uh, what I've seen here tonight, uh, I'm glad, I'm really glad to see people kind of work together. And having been a presiding commissioner, that part, what you did tonight, you, you stood up for the other entities that's involved in this, in this long, uh, package thing too. Uh, but you're reaching out, you're going further than what maybe the job description says, but that's what it's supposed to be. We've talked tonight about, uh, rebranding. Rebranding, you know, has got some, some very good things inside of it. That was, that could be used, but maybe not on a large scale, but something that could be worked with, with Main Street, uh, the Chamber, uh, E-Doc, uh, and, and a few other of our social clubs that could come together and do something. Uh, we're not, we're all in this thing together, whether we like it or not. Um, I gripe, I throw the darts, it's, uh, but kind of like Clark. He's out there batting for you, for you whether you know it or not. And maybe you guys don't know me, but I care about you. And I think a lot of these people up here, they take a bit. And I'm sorry you do take a bit, but some of them take maybe. But that's, that's what you get the big burger for. So, anyway, thank you all, and for everybody coming.
Um, can I ask you to come up and tell us about the hot air?
Yes.
Is that your ear?
Speech, speech.
I know you posted it on Facebook, but I don't know if everyone else. I didn't even know you were here until that.
No one knew there was hot air balloons around here. One lady decided my help.
Look. Okay, so as you all know, we had a hot air affair over the weekend. And this started out, just take that, this started out a year ago in March, when I found out that the twenty twenty-three hot air affair has been canceled. And I was thought about it, and I thought, we cannot lose this, we, we, we're on a roll, we got to keep this going. We, we, it's a good thing, we have people going. So I always had good ideas. And, but I always had a lot of people that taught me information with ideas. But we've been working on this since last month. Quietly, haven't said a lot, but I didn't want to, because I didn't know that it's going to be a big fall or a big success. Very few people were involved in it. Um, and, and actually, some of the people didn't even talk to each other. They were, they had this position, this is what they're supposed to do, this is what you're supposed to do. And we were talking to them, and I think that's deliberate. Because it was, that's their one job they had to do, so they had to go in there and do it. And then when you put all the people together, it just worked. Um, I had not thought we'd have as many people as we did. I was, I was surprised with everybody else. The key to this was a community event, it was free to the public, people brought the kids, people talked about, people came and they stayed. We had, we had bounce houses. I wish we'd have had more stuff for the kids. Next year, there'll be a lot more kid stuff, but we had, uh, bounce houses, we had the Super Heroes, we had, we had the Perry Princesses, we had the mermaid at the pool with the pirate and the priest wind, thank you to the city, uh, for that. I didn't advertise it because it was only like a week before that I felt comfortable that the food will be open. And so like on Wednesday before the event, I signed the contract and paid it. And it was sponsored by the community. Believe that we got forty-six thousand in sponsorship. And we had to pay for motel rooms, we had to pay for insurance. Well, anybody that's ever done one of these, it's not a, it's not free to do it, but the whole key was, it was a community event. It was so successful, I was so wore out.
You ran a bubble man.
I had a bubble man.
You had a van for two days, we were rocking up there.
Um, everybody just pulled together, it was just amazing. And the weather's in the Ben Mole vehicle, except that one little downpour, and I want to tell you, I almost cried. And I thought everybody was fully, and they went to the cars, and all the armed fun came out, they came back, and it's dark. Everybody was, and it's dark out there, and everybody was still there. So, you don't ever give up. Okay, listen to me, I've done this a lot, in a lot of years, I've done some stupid stuff.
Well, you did.
That, yes, I have, the people told me it was stupid, you don't ever give up. Go do it, show them they're wrong. No, show them you're right, they don't have to be wrong, it's not about that. It's not about me, it's not about anybody, you just go do it. And you will find out that people, once you start it, they'll come along, they'll come along. But you walk out of here thinking, okay, I'm going back to going board, and I'm just going to go ahead and do it. Because that's what I do. That's, I should, I don't have, like I said, I don't think there's anything this can't do, that you could tell this. I don't think there's anything this town can't do. If we do it together, and I said I didn't want to come tonight because I'm on a positive note now. I've seen, I got wrapped up in all this negativity. And I'm, and I, I mean, had to separate myself from it because I knew that wasn't killing. My business is good. I don't know too many people whose business isn't good here. You know, hey, you guys, I'm going to be your neighbors, so I'm going to be watching you. I'm right nearby you. I had to say that.
And you better watch out for Earth. Make sure if you want to help.
Thank you, thank you.
Anywhere we can help you want.
Thank you. And I'll ask, because everybody knows I don't have a problem getting on the ground and saying, uh, saying anything. But anyway, I don't want to make this about me, there were so many people that were involved in them. Uh, so many volunteer, volunteers. The sponsorship, we had fifty people sponsor something with cash or, or services. And it kind of snowballed because it didn't start out that way. But the more it went on, and then the truck, I said I wanted forty balloons, and I think we got thirty-eight. It wouldn't matter if we had five, it was two women, we were just absolutely. And so anyway, I just want everybody to know that there's probably, we're already talking about next year. Getting it, that we know now, when citizens will have another meeting and sit down and say, what do we need to do different? You know, and, um, I don't want to go say about it, it, it wouldn't be a way, guys. I had no idea, you have any numbers on how many people, you know, I was.
Thirty-five hundred. You know, I think we were getting, we were counting cars, and three people or so per car, but it might have been a lot more because a lot of people came with the whole family. You don't know how many, but you know what the biggest thing was? Romania did this, and it was all free. Totally free. People would come up, what do I owe you? Twenty dollars dog.
She put me in charge.
Who was making money? I was in charge of parking, driving handicap people around, and toilet paper.
I am serious, I am serious, this man's came early, him and our best, early. Stayed late, and what was he doing? I got to go to Dollar Channel and get toilet paper because the board bodies are out.
It was so much fun because people would come up and say, I can't believe this is free. And they'd come and, my dental office staff that are there, and they just, they could have had fun.
The vendors were, I didn't charge the vendors, we didn't charge the vendors, they pulled in there, it was free, we didn't charge the food front. Everybody was good.
Food was good.
The food was excellent, and the, and we have a beautiful airport, you guys.
Yeah.
Absolutely beautiful, the land is.
They run light.
Yeah, the land is absolutely well kept and is beautiful. Anyway, I don't know what else to say except, you know, if anybody's watching this. I want to thank everybody. Thank everybody, because there's too many people to thank. And I'll be getting with you guys probably in the next few months and see how much you want to get into this.
There you go. Bring the dad.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Give it up, yeah. I don't pick on anybody else.
That was thirty-three, first thirty, and I want to stand up there, so.
No, she, she kind of likes.
Yeah.
She's my, so I don't, she's, like, she's my under. Well, if there's nothing else, we will adjourn.
No.
No, so, oh, yeah, comments, yeah, comments come as fast.
None.
I was going to do, I'd say, uh, street crews are on its own too this week, um, patching.
Yeah, I was thinking that.
They, uh, are helping out with the snow in the cemeteries to go and get somebody hired. So the maintenance crew is also helping, know, um, airport runway, we're still getting them face down, so. Everything's going good, and I'm glad that they wasn't in the way for the hot air pouring, but they kept working through it, so. That's all I know.
You said it all.
Oh, yeah, we, we did have a bid opening for Harry Street, uh, GPS ladies and men, so.
I'm just going to add, we're doing the pictures, sending, getting, getting a lot of photos out there, you guys working. I, we need to let folks know, I, I know you did the one, um, that, that the, uh, the person contacted me, contacted you, you guys done, me and lady. But we need to let folks know, because I know that wasn't the only one doing it, because she told me that.
I do, I do have one more thing, uh, I will have more time to do that. We are doing some inspectors starting today.
Awesome.
So, uh, I'll probably be giving him a speed up here in the next couple of weeks, but then I will have more time to do that.
All right. Because I was generally putting scanner and have it going through the newspaper, so he can come out, so thank you.
Uh, I've been working on good CID, I've been working on, uh, two tips, for the check-in one hundred funds on two different major projects. Um, been doing a lot, continued on doing a lot of stuff on planning and zoning. There's been a lot of different contractors wanting to have variances, there's a lot of building going on if you didn't know this. And there, there are some questions about corner lots and other things that all have to be taken care of, uh, with all the building codes. Another thing that we, well, yeah, I did this on the one twelve Easter, the demo. So we got word today that they have, that DNR has received their check. They are looking at the planned inspect, asked them how long, they said two, three days. And so then they'll get back with their comment, and then hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have it ready to go out and out for bid. I'm, I'm a month off before I said it would be, because I said April, May. But little did I know that DNR has a grand new person taking over the brown kiln program. So we're working through that with her. Um, we're also working on the B, BB corridor with CID, one of the work, help search night over there. So we've had quite a few meetings on that with Park West, and then the planning for that. We've had meetings with hospitals, we've had some meetings with a, a few other groups. The, uh, also we're working on the BB, or the Bob F Griffin CID project out there. And so I've been working with that CID, and I mean, trying, trying to find the paperwork to get all that stuff together. So busy time, busy time.
Uh, work is continuing on the tennis court down there with the ball, the tennis court line and stuff. They're still putting the resources back down, so it's been running along pretty good. Um, work have started on the floor and place rubber for the new people playground, so it's, hopefully they think, um, we're people fishing around with that project is going. Uh, we didn't get to open the pool on time on a twenty-four D C weather. We were ready to staff and ready to go, the weather, the weather down here was there for about a week. Um, but we did finally get to open it on Friday the third, and that's pretty good, pretty decent, so. It showed up, lots of the weather, fashion fans, it's all moved along. I'm going to be with the pirates.
Well, we had a mermaid and a pirate, you know what I mean?
Get a picture.
We had three swimmers from one to four to help sue out on, on Saturday, and I think they're good enough. If you get a picture with the mermaid, that's what we want.
Me? No, they, uh, they said no old guy.
Understandable.
Yeah, that's what I got for one.
Well, I applaud you for, uh, jumping into a new job and getting from the pool, and a great job that you've done, and your staff and them all ever else, Amy, the teacher, and her.
A lot of the girls in the front office and stuff have did tremendous amount of help, especially with Amy with Black Card and Ally. Uh, she's been helping me with it with rec, with, uh, finding her school faculty, trying to get everybody locked out of that, so. Everybody has been, definitely not just myself, it's had yours, I've really been getting up and going. All right, guys.
Uh, we had a pretty many weeks.
Uh, we had a pretty busy weekend. One thing I was, uh, I made a mistake, I inadvertently left off, uh, we had an incident on the weekend that, uh, our local company mentioned, they were running perfect wonders and, uh.
Northwest of food.
Hours.
Oh.
We were the only one on, on site.
And, uh, so I, I did fail to mention them, and they did a wonderful job, worked one off. Um, so now this coming week, uh, we'll take a little break from the traffic and whatnot. Uh, we have spoken with the cops coming up, uh, the fifth from four to six P M, and, uh, wreck of art. We're gonna finish, uh, our fitting hopefully very soon, and we're continuing our software upgrade.
Fire departments assigned by, we last week with the super duty, we worked most relax to them. Trying with super duty, relax, we run now and call, and try to find parts for the air show, or the, 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 the. And properly, the guys, they just finished a job, working the same way, they're involved and constantly. It is overwhelming, and surprising, more than I can see. What you did, that's what it is. The guys that are probably just, um, just trying to come in, you know, like, I mean, it's hard, it's, uh, we did, we did, we did all the innovation there. And probably say, we didn't provide, uh, it was probably, maybe, six or seven, maybe, to that point. I'd actually been trying to bother them, coming, just, uh, and, and, uh, pay up on some of the funding stuff, and, 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 uh, yeah. Uh, today, quite a minute, thanks for that, so. I would say, you put, kind of service, a lot of things for the moment, if you spend time driving, it'll be a little. I think it's good, it's Thursday, my, my driver's license, a lot that I did, it's reliable. So I actually did, I remember, talked about it, it's a lot, I think there's things, uh, you teach. A lot of it's true, it's a lot of that, so I appreciate it, I respect it. But it's more human, it's, 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 it's all the way, it's, it's, it's probably, it's, 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 you know, everybody's working for the community.
Well, um, Carmen's trying to wrap up the autumn, last year, I've been helping her with that. Looking hard, definitely a refresh, maybe a bit. But, uh, the other thing is, I've been supporting my head on the remodel, they started the remodel at City Hall this week, so. That's, that's going forward.
That's more than destruction, my eyes.
It's based on.
The bids been less than a quarter.
And they, and they started working on it.
Can you answer any of the questions from the thing, over thirty thousand? Is that something that you would?
I might be able to.
Okay, I got a couple here that I have a question about. Do you know what current services, it says, current services, department supply, any idea what that is?
Current services are these departments, they're our top five departments.
Why would you say department supply?
It's probably what the first thing that was on, they, they're usually like thirty or forty line items, and for that, that would probably be top one.
I'd like to know for sure that that's what it is.
That's, that's, it's not, it's not an office, but we do buy some office prices. So I think that they're usually thirty, thirty or so line items where over a month's time, with the state, it's kind of, but I can easily read something.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um. The issue is, cancel list again, I forgot, panelists, I don't even, other thing, the. Panelists is the system that.
It's the automatic.
Yes, yes.
You don't need.
Okay. Okay, so there's annual meeting for that? Like what, what do we do with annual meeting like that?
Is it annual, that's your annual life?
It says annual meeting, annual leader posting fee.
Yeah.
That's, that's the annual fee.
Just the fee for them.
That's, that's just your annual life.
Exactly. Um, and then, I'm assuming the, the walking trail paving, twenty-eight thousand, that's the last one we extend, right? That was it, no more out there, thank you. And then finally, um, William and Campbell, two-month legal service? I'm assuming that's from the park board suing us?
No, that was just, I forgot who's on the, out of there.
I was gonna say for two months.
I'm a really good.
You're slipping.
Sometimes we have a column and remind you.
Yeah, okay, that's it for me, thank you.
I'll get to, I'll get to that detail tomorrow.
I appreciate that.
Um, we also had a new employee start away, uh, new customer service, uh, recognized, started, uh, special frame. Very, very impressed, very good, hope you come back tomorrow. She's doing really good, and it's gonna make a big difference, because everyone's, uh. And we got a lot of different questions really coming in, with the licenses, there's only a couple left on the top, that follows, remind you, maybe two more left, and we'll be out there. Other than that, just the day to day.
I'm just, Chris, Chris, our IT guy.
Staff support, working a lot of that, um, and the IT master plan.
I think the two are city council, um, on this.
I want to thank Sue Manion again for the best city activity of everything. And it, it was amazing, it involved so many people, many people here in the room, so many attended, and the comments were nothing but superlatives. It was fantastic, so I just want to say that. Thank you. Glad to see that Harrison came in. Always thought it was, I was trying to get nervous on that, and it was, but, oh, holy crap, here we go. Um, I have, I don't have any experience on hot air balloons, but I have been frequent blowing hot air.
Yeah.
We need your help, that's all I have.
Um, definitely hot air balloon festival, it clips all over things, but we did have the farmer's market start out, and they had, they did come out, we are. I approached, we talked, first, we came to downtown, which is another place of interest, especially to me, but also part of the development. We need all of them, we need the truck stop, and we need the downtown. And downtown people, that becomes kind of like, to me, in the last four, five years. Like, when I was able to walk before my surgery, I walked through every business, greeted every single person, and gave new information on them, greetings, and invited them to meet with me. And then I was not able to do that, I'm sorry, I haven't been able to do it, I'm, I'm getting back to where I actually walked to the balloon festival from the parking lot, and it was, I was high, and I did it. So I'm gonna try to get now on my feet again. And on a bad night, we lost ground, we can't serve, uh, bring the bounds, and come apart, people on, on third street, uh, which is very hard to interpret. Um, and for children, who have, who have, who, much easier, that's the reason. Um, because it's, it's in the family name.
You can get them like before, you, that's always scary. Um, just wanted to say, we had a really big crowd tonight, and thank you all for joining us. You can't make the town better if you don't have people here and, and providing input. So I appreciate it. Um, definitely thanks, Sue, I remember when you started, Sue, I thought it was longer than a year ago, first one. I, I remember you saying, I'm gonna try it once, that's it. So, so I, I do appreciate you doing that, great for family. Um, just wanted to say, you know, on the creative community stuff, um, I do know that there's been some holes done on the forums. Uh, and granted, it's not perfect, but I, I noticed a pretty high percentage, like around ninety-nine percent, uh, against. Uh, so I just want to say, you know, you do see stuff on, on, on Facebook, you know, everybody will, or a lot of folks will try to poo through that and just say, hey, they don't pay attention. You pay attention on that. Um. All, all the staff takes out at some point, too, for, for the multiple jobs we're doing. And the incredible job you've done, while we haven't had it to be managed. Now, this could have fallen apart real easy, but we trusted you, and, and you've proven that, at this point, that the trust was well deserved. So thank you, thank you to all of you, and thanks to Dan, even though he's not here. Um, he has no idea what he's, he's, he's. Yeah, he does, he does. I, I'll be, I'll be happy to add more. Um, Ira, you, you got the pool going after we were told by a park board for the last thirteen years, and even city council couldn't be done with six, by the six.
Because my guy wasn't here yet.
You have been the right guy, you've done a hell of a job, and I appreciate you for it. And every day.
It wasn't a, a lone effort.
I understand that, but it took a leader to get it going, so thank you.
Well, he was out there working hard, if anyone else.
Without paying you.
I was hanging out by the mermaid.
I thought she was a mermaid. Um, and then just one final thing, uh, actually, maybe we need to look at this as a, on the city one side, but, uh. Uh, gee, I, I just got a question, is there a way that, since we continue to have rain clear into June eventually, there a way to push that burn ban back, and they just have a capture depression after a certain date, to say, it's time for the city council to go ahead and say, we're burn banned for this time? Just a thought, I, I get a lot of people asking me about the burn ban, like, why is it so early, it's, you know, we've got all this rain.
It's just that you can still burn, you just have to get it from there, and then it's gonna be your clock for.
So just get a.
Call me all year. You don't get a burn from there, we can, the guys with the hose, it's, it's.
It's, it's out there for, for convenience, if they want to. They just have to follow rules, same way, follow rules.
Sure. Is it, and it's on the website, where we can get it? No, I couldn't find it, not bad. Thank you, though, I'll, I'll go.
I don't know if it's on the website, I'll double check though.
So you have to go to City Hall with them?
You can just call.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's a D E O, I think it's calling, usually the inspector goes and he's making sure that, 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 uh, the climate conditions are okay for burning, and that you're not burning trash or something.
Oh, sure, the same, same stuff as more, but, yeah, just a different time, okay. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, we'll come again.
So I'll check it out, there?
I will. I don't remember, I don't, okay. I'll be sure, first of all, everyone thanks, Sue, but one thing, I want to thank is the community that works together, because you can't do that without people coming together and working, spending their money for the event, coming and spending money to assist with it. I did get to go to the, the farmer's market, and it was, it was, I came later, but I did get a dance lesson, and the lady that they were doing the dance lesson, and she wanted to come to town, the guy, he liked to dance, learn to dance, so he was just. And, uh, so I think it was a very successful weekend, I think the, we in our city departments work so well together, that's been really nice to watch. So thank you guys for, for working together and getting the things done, and there is a loose thing, you guys are stepping up and doing something, so, so. Right, it's been great. So was that, uh, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn, that's a good question.
Our party client communications personnel and go get. Ron Bygert.
Yep.
Mark Carr.
Yeah.
Becky Furde, yeah, do you need to report?
Yes.